Test.
You try to set her mic and see if she can talk. Yes, hello. Maybe we can get back to that outside of the cell system we installed last week. Okay.
Test, test, test.
Welcome everybody. To the Thursday, November 21st, first 2024 regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please read your role?
Councilmember Slatton. Councilmember Perdon.
Here.
Councilmember Kramer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Here.
And Mayor Tawkeen.
Here. Councilmember Perdon, can you do this in the black?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please may I stand in, let's just take a moment for those in your life who are struggling right now or if you've lost someone else. Do you like to pull by the number? Do you like to pull by the number one?
I move that we approve the agenda with the amendment of deleting item number one.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Slatton, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your favor.
Bye.
Motion passes without the miss vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to item F, public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter, not only agenda, but that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, if there were no exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. We'll limit public comments to three minutes. If you have a comment, you can step forward and say your name. If you're on Zoom, please leave a comment in the chat tool and the city clerk will leave it up after it comes to you in the chair. First, we'll start with Carol Jeanette. Carol Jeanette, pardon me. Or Carol Jean. One of those. Welcome back.
Too high, of course. All right, close that. Okay, good evening. My name is Carolyn Jared. I'm a retired teacher. I worked for 18 years as an elementary school teacher at both Rose Valley and Pompos Schools. After I retired, I served eight years on the high school board. All this experience has given me a compelling picture of the challenges and obstacles to success that many of our students are facing. Sadly, the rates of poverty and drug addiction are incredibly high in our county. At a meeting of the retired teachers of Lake County Division 35 last May, we heard a presentation from Julie McGovern, Director of the Mendocino College Adopt a Fifth Grader Program. And I have to tell you, I had great hope. The retired teachers wanted to make a donation then and there, but I said, whoa. The Mendocino College program only serves schools in Lucerne, Upper Lake, Lakeport, and Kelseyville. And I wanted to see if there was a program that served Canuckdie and Middletown. So I did some research over the summer and I found Jay Loudon, Director of the Yuba College Program. So before I get into details, I'd like to digress and give you the backstory, because a lot of times the backstory is the most interesting part. It all started in Oklahoma in the summer of 1947 where an ambitious young man named Wade Conigger was mauling the wands. One of his clients was so impressed with his hard work and hustle that he got him a scholarship to Yale. You could do that back then. Once Wade was out of Yale, he had a very successful career in business and ultimately retired to Hopland. But he never forgot that extra leg up that that scholarship gave him. And when he retired in 2007, he gave money to Mendocino College to start a foundation, a nonprofit, to offer scholarships to fifth graders. Wade felt that the goal should start earlier than the teenage years and the Adopt a Fifth Grader Program was born. It works like this. At the end of the year programs, assemblies, fifth graders at their schools are chosen by their teachers and principals to be recognized. They're given a $25 gift certificate and another certificate that promises that if they graduate from high school, they will get $500. However, if they enroll in junior college, community college, and take 12 units, they will get $1,000. The students who are chosen are not necessarily the top of their class. They are those who might not be motivated in school due to difficult circumstances, but who show promise. They might be the first in their family to graduate and go to college. It might just need to be recognized and supported and given the chance to have a dream. Julie says that 50% of her students do go on to college. In 2023, 10 Lake County scholarships were funded by Mendocino College. That number rose to 24 in 2024. Mendocino College has been doing this for 17 years. Yuba College has only recently been offering this program, having started just two years ago. Last year, Yuba was only funding one scholarship per school for a total of seven scholarships, both Canuckdie and Middletown. It takes $700 to fund each scholarship, but donations of any amount are gratefully accepted. If we truly want to break the cycle of poverty and drug addiction, we need to start early by giving students attainable goals and supporting them to achieve these goals. I know that you as a council cannot allocate money for this program, but I know that most of you are members of other charitable groups, animal clubs, or service organizations. Both Julie and Jay have said that they are very willing to speak to any group that would be interested in hearing about their programs or have any questions. So I'm hoping you will pass along this information. I hope that we as a community will step up and support this program for our youth. Thank you very much for your time, Cleveland. And as any good teacher, of course, I have handouts.
I want to make a comment. The city of Clear Lake has what they call a Promise Program for all students at Yuba College at Lakeport. I mean, that provides money for all the funds that they might not have, you know, health insurance and those kind of things. So the city is proactive in this.
That's wonderful. I'm really happy to hear that. I think we got, you know, fifth grade, you know, before the teenage years, before all of that. So this page tells you for both the Mendocino and the Yuba College Program, a short what it is and then who to contact and then this is Yuba's pamphlet. So give us to your clerk.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the chamber?
Consent now?
That's it. Thank you so much.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Did you have a question for me? No.
No, no.
Thank you.
Any other comments here in the chamber, public comment? Yes, sir, come forward. Please state your name.
I'm Ron Bolton. Good evening, everyone. This evening, I would like to begin with by commending the emergency services of Clear Lake. My wife and I, we live on Liddell Avenue, 3863 Liddell, to be specific. We have had three fires in the last month adjacent to our property. Two at 3883 Liddell, which I'll talk about in just a moment, and one directly across the street from us. The first two were vehicle fires, set intentionally. The first one, we were very worried about because it was right under trees, pine trees, which had they caught, would have quickly spread and consumed our property, which was right next to it. We were very fortunate. Emergency services were there so fast and they did a fantastic job of putting a very dangerous fire out. Thank you. About a week later, there was another vehicle fire across the street from us. That was not a direct worry soon to us because there were no trees involved. But once again, emergency services responded quickly. Now, on the 11th, I believe, of November, that was a Monday morning about 6:30 a.m., we were awakened by a large explosion at 3883, about 60 feet from where we sleep. And the property was quickly, totally involved. And so much so, well, we were grateful for one thing, there was no wind that night. But the heat melted items on our property, including a greenhouse and so forth, 40 feet away. We lost our fence that connects us, which is our issue right now. But once again, the emergency services, they, and that was a bad fire. Have you seen that property now? It is a total disaster. It's nothing but fire debris. No one was hurt. None of our property was clinically damaged except for the fence, which we would like to repair. Now, we're wondering what happens next. There's been a lot of questions about who actually really owns that property and is responsible for it. We cannot repair that fence until the damage along our fence is removed. Now, the previous tenants dumped years and years of garbage along the fence. We can't take responsibility for moving all of that out and all the fire debris ourselves. It's dangerous. Professionals should be attending to that. So our question is, what happens next? Whose responsibility is the cleanup so that we can do our part to clean up our property?
Thank you, sir. If you could take a moment, just chat with the gentleman over here. Give him your information. And fortunately, she's a paid here, so please pass law. Be very quick to hear what you did. All right, any other public comment? Yes, please come forward.
My name's Patty Duke. Hello. And I'm from Clear Lake. And I wanted to thank our police department and the guys and the girls. I see them out there working hard and being very visible and doing their best. I believe in sharing and caring. And there's becoming a lot more hate and get out of my way. It's all about me. And we have residential streets and people live on like Old 53 and the streets just off of the main streets. And so it's only a two-lane road. And if people are turning left, including me, there's people that are going into the ditch to get around you because you're holding them up. And that's really dangerous. And then I brought this up before, the S curve after Travel Lodge on Old 53. There's a 35 mile an hour sign and people are right on your bumper. I don't go 35 miles an hour because even tonight, it's dark. There was an older man with four-wheel walker just coming out of there. And then going the other way, there was a girl with a flashlight and there's no lines that you can see. And because it says 35, people expect to go 35 or 40, I mean, you know, like Barnalee Jones. And it's so dangerous. So instead of that 35 mile an hour sign, there should be one of those walking signs for people that are walking because it's so dangerous, especially at night when I see people there and even in the daytime because everybody's in a hurry and they walk on both sides. And the one on the right going that way is so narrow, but the cars, it's just like it's a bother for the people to slow down and watch out for people that aren't able to drive a car. So I'm really concerned still about there before somebody gets killed or gravely injured because it's wrong. And I believe in caring and sharing, not the hate and the me, 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 get out of my way. And a lot of people, I guess, move from Santa Rosa and other places where there's big roads and fast traffic and stuff. This isn't Santa Rosa. This isn't a big city. This is a town. And we all have to live together, look out for one another instead of push, push on your bumper. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, please.
Any other comments here in the chamber?
Marie Garcia, I live here in the city of Clear Lake. She just reminded me talking about the S curve right there. That is one of the areas, along with the other part of Old 53, going by the new apartment, so Canuckdie apartment. That's another S curve. And neither of them have any type of markings on the road. They have no white ones on the side, no yellow. You can't, you really don't know where the lane is other than the fact that you've lived here forever. You know, you're just so used to how you go. That's another dangerous part about it. That there is no lines for people to guide, to guide people as they make those turns. The S curve by Mendocino Mill, Mend O'Mill, is terrible. I mean, and the fact that people walk there is nuts, but people do. They need to get from A to B and they walk. So it really could use even possible some type of barrier for people that walk along because someone is going to get badly injured there or accident if there hasn't already been. In addition to the intersection at Lake Shore and Old 53, that, there's no lines. There's no lineage for people to know that that's another curved spot where you don't really realize because you don't know where the lane is. So it would be really nice to see some road crossings and road, in that type of way, to make things safer. But the Mend O'Mill curve, really dangerous. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, everyone, for your words. We're going to move on to item G, the consent agenda. Does any member of the council want to pull an item from the consent agenda? Any, anyone here in the chamber who'd like to make a comment about item one of the consent agenda? Yes, please come forward.
Marie Garcia, city of Clear Lake. I'm just wondering about, is there a way that you can, we can hear, like for instance, item number three, what that discussion is? Or I don't know how the consent agenda works, but I would like to hear more about item three separately.
There was a pretty thorough discussion on item three in prior meetings.
You mean city council meeting?
Yes. And I believe the next public comment person might have something related to that as well, so.
Okay. Is that a big deal? Maybe I missed the meeting.
We spent a good portion of time talking about it.
Okay, so they're going to hit that topic, right? Okay, so they're going to hit that topic, right?
We'll find out. But at this point, it's part of the consent agenda. We already discussed it. We already approved it. This is just the second reading for approval.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to thank you tonight for the tobacco retail license ordinance getting to this point. It's been an honor to work with you all and to witness probably the most exciting effort in tobacco prevention that I've had in my career with the city of Clear Lake. The majority of you, over the last two years, have been so engaged in this issue, in this concern, elevating the concern, participating in community forums, listening to youth, listening to parents, listening to teachers, school administrators, medical professionals. And what a joy to have many of you come up and say, when is this ordinance getting to us? It's sort of, it's the world turned upside down, and a health advocate like me, it's a dream. So I really, really appreciate it. You, your community has felt heard and validated, and that is such a testament to where the innovations of this city and your integrity, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any other comments on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are comments on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. A motion from Councilmember Preymar, a second from Councilmember Sluthen. Please vote in your favor.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, discussion and consideration of ordinance number 276-2024, an amendment to Chapter 3, Section 5, the Clear Lake Municipal Code Regarding Fire Mitigation Fee. To the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So I think this is the fourth or fifth meeting this year related to fire fees. I didn't give much background in the staff report this time, but this is a development impact fee on new development in the city. It's something that only cities and counties can do, can levy, not special districts. And the Lake County Fire Protection District, as well as the other fire protection districts throughout the county, had a NEXA study done and have requested the cities and the county adopt this fee on their behalf. So that happened already earlier this year, as you recall. And so there was an ordinance amendment, done April 4th, that was related to the fee itself within the ordinance, how that was calculated. That was removed in reference to resolution, which is how we do rest of our fees and that resolution, with actual fees adopted on July 18th. And we have began, began collection of that fee since that time. There's some additional cleanup items in the ordinance that were needed, said, you know, various references to a number of things. And then, some changes in the direction from what was in the ordinance that the council gave at previous meetings. And so the four things that were discussed at the July 18th meeting, council made correctional, was first, that the city collect the fee during the building permit process. Recent practice has been the fire district collected the fee. Second, an automatic annual adjustment to the fee being included based on CPI index. Third, the district submit annual report to the council, the amount of the fee and what was spent on. That actually has been part of the ordinance the whole time, it just hasn't been, hasn't been completed. But, and then finally, the use of the funds collected in the city be spent on facilities within the city. So those are the four things council gave direction on. That's what has been worked into the draft changes that you have in front of you. You know, there's been a lot of work on various ordinances in a relatively short period of time. I don't know if City Attorney Pucci may want to add, there's some things related to, so, you know, this is mitigation fee, and there's a number of requirements in the law about how that's handled, how it's reported on and whatnot. I think City Attorney Pucci may have some recommendations for a couple of additional amendments related to the language he had before you. So I think he was going to go over them briefly, and then you could, we can move forward with that and include those in the second reading, if that's what you're doing. So I guess we'll leave it at that, and we'll show you.
Any questions from the council? Is it your duty?
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
One moment. Just have to turn it up a bit. Okay, right now?
Council, can you hear me? Good evening.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to probably wait until we get to the motion part, or the motion if there is one made, depending upon how it's phrased. There are some clerical issues and numbering, A, Bs, and Cs to 1, 2s, and 3s. I'm not going to belabor the council with this. So long as any motion that's made includes direction that any typographical, clerical, or administrative issues be cleaned up, as long as we have that direction. The only other substantive item is that we probably need to clean up a couple of the provisions, particularly in subsection B of 3-5.7.50, related to just making sure that the language ensures that we are complying with the Mitigation Fee Act. So we don't need to get into the weeds on that. I just would put that out there for the record, that the direction to staff should be, prior to the second read and adoption, that any administrative clerical issues be addressed, and that if there is any modification to, minor modification to language to ensure compliance with the Mitigation Fee Act, that that be accomplished as well. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Which subsection was that?
Could you repeat that section?
What was it? What was the subsection you referenced?
Specifically, it would be Section 3-5.7. It's just some modification of language in there to ensure compliance with the Mitigation Fee Act.
Okay, there's no other questions from council? I will open it up to public comment. Anyone here? Chief, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Willie's State of Fire Chief Lake County Fire. So, dear City Council, the proposed amendments of the fire mitigation fee ordinance have a significant impact on us, as the fees we collect to protect our community members is definitely important. On Section 3.3-5.6B, states the city may retain their own administrative costs from the fees. This already reduces the revenue of the district. Additionally, that cost was not approved in the fee calculation adopted by the city at that time. Sections 3-5.6C and 3-5.7.50, B3 states the fees will only be used for facilities within the city of Clear Lake. It's not possible to split our district. Equipment that is in the city responds to the unincorporated areas. Those areas and those resources in the Lower Lake area, unincorporated areas, respond to the city of Clear Lake. The city of Clear Lake represents about 77% of our call volume, so it's pretty significant. So to try to split our district with those fees is basically impossible to do that. Section 3-5.7.50B, states that the district has to hold harmless to city for not collecting fees improperly. The city is imposing the fee collection upon themselves against the wishes and the past practices of the district for the past 30 years. Section 3-5.8C, council should review the fire mitigation fee laws regarding making any changes to the fee, even by resolution, without adoption of a new NEXA study, which we do about every eight years. We hadn't done one for quite a while, so there was a lot of animosity in this NEXA study, because it hadn't been done for nearly 30 years. Section 3-5.11B should be reviewed for legality. The law does not allow for normal inflation that is reviewed and approved annually without the NEXA study. So it does only allow us to collect that CPI on that annual basis. But in regards to the city collecting the fees, it's kind of a, it doesn't seem efficient to have two agencies doing the same thing. The fire district, the developer, still comes down to the station, they still have to pay the fees. Responsible for doing the annual report, the five-day report, collect all the tracks and the detailed information for each permit, responsible for refunding any issues or any refunds to go back to that developer, as well as all the other administrative tasks. Only 2% can be collected on those fees, which would put the NEXA study, the cost upwards of $20,000. So 2% of $25,000 annually is only $500. So the city takes their portion of what is left for the district. It doesn't leave a lot on the table for us to do the administration part. The city did start collecting the fees, which is kind of in violation of the current, in the current ordinance. The fees were collected incorrectly. The city collected them on 10/3. We weren't even aware of the collection until 10/31, and it was undercollected. It's just kind of an example of a chaos that can occur. So the district is requesting that the city allow the district to continue to collect the fees, as we have for the last 30 years with the county of Lake, creating another level of administration, is only going to delay and cause some inefficiencies and cost more money. Lastly, the district also requests that the ordinance be tabled so we can have a chance to collaborate. And that's one of the things on 718, you asked us to collaborate with the city. And we have had no collaboration. I met with Alan on Monday, and I've been in the way to conference for the WOOOOP for the past couple of days, and I got this revision last night. So I haven't had much time to prep for it, or to have a better, better response to it. But if you would table it so that we have a chance to meet with city administration, with my administration, and sit down and review this, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There is one comment on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Please read it.
This is from Megan Estad, on behalf of Highlands Water. She stays, "On behalf of Highlands Water, please note that a letter was sent via email to myself, Ms. Swanson, this afternoon regarding Highlands Water opposition of Item 9 and 10 on tonight's agenda. It is being requested that Ms. Swanson read the emailed letter aloud in public comment for both of these items." That letter was emailed to the council earlier today.
Is that me? Yeah, that's separate.
Yeah, just a point of order, Madam Clerk, that I think that that email was, or that comment was asking on Items 9 and 10. I think we're on 8, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. So hold that statement, we'll follow up with it in the next round. All right, any other comments on Zoom?
There are no further comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll bring it back to council. Yeah. Oh, it looks like to me that there's some different things here that we need to talk about. So I, I think maybe there needs to be some more discussion on this, so. And some clerical errors and stuff cleaned up, is there a way that we did that? Put it back on again, December 5th, or next week? Well, yeah, December 5th, next week.
Yeah, I mean, that's the intention, anyway, the second reading. I mean, is there, I mean, I'm not sure what direction you're, you're intending here.
Well, I just feel like Willie has, doesn't feel like he's had time to meet with you.
Well, I mean, I think Chief Sepeta's concerns are related to what's in the ordinance itself, which is based on the direction the council gave us. So if you want to give a different direction, we can do that. I mean, you know, we've asked the fire district to sit down and talk about the logistics of collecting the fee, but there's disagreement on the fact that the city should be collecting the fee from the fire district. So we haven't had this discussion. And I think the council needs to make that clear, one way or the other, and then, you know, we can, we can go from there.
Councilman? Isn't it our responsibility to make sure those fees are collected? Though, isn't that why we said the city needed to collect them in the first place?
We are responsible for the fee.
All right, council, prepare.
I think in our first, we were pretty clear on that we wanted the city to collect those fees. So, yeah.
I think it's an important question that was just asked in terms of, isn't it our obligation? And I just want to, from a legal perspective, I want to make sure that's very clear. In drafting this ordinance, there was no really intent in changing what the district is getting, or how the monies were being used, or whether, you know, they would get those monies. But the district does not have the authority to initiate this fee. The city does, and the city is doing it as a courtesy to the community and to the district. But along with that comes some, the need, the legal need, to clarify the roles and responsibilities if we are collecting that, we're collecting that for them. So from a fiscal perspective, from a finance perspective, from an administrative perspective, from an audit perspective, we need to establish certain parameters, which was the attempt in this ordinance, to make sure that the city is in compliance with the Fee Act and all of the provisions that we are responsible for, that should something go wrong in the handling of these monies, the district is not going to be liable for. So that's part of the reason that some of these provisions were put in there. But none of them were put in there to really change or alter, you know, fundamentally or substantively, but really to clarify the procedure and process to make sure the city's protected.
Thank you, Mr. Bucci. That's fair. That's a clarification, because we also discussed that the fees were, the amount of being collected incorrectly too, at the time. We discussed this, correct? They were collecting more than what should have been collected, if we're.
Yeah, I mean, for 20 years, I think.
It just, we just decided to not try to.
I mean, you know, it was a time. No one in this room was, I don't think, realized that that was being done until we kind of started doing this update. But yeah, at some point, it was, it was increased without the proper authorities.
I was trying to just bring back to my memory that we had discussed all these things. So this was a pretty long discussion on this, so I think that we're, yeah, okay. So I don't want to clarify. So any other comments from council, or any change in direction? Done. All right. Then it is the case, all, take action.
I move that we approve ordinance 276-2024, an amendment to Chapter 3, Section 5 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code Regarding Fire Mitigation Fee, with the criminal and administrative cleanup as our Chinese suggested.
Second that. A motion from Councilmember Sluthen, a second from Vice Mayor Olberton. Please vote in your favor.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Chief.
Can I comment very fast?
Yeah, I think I'll comment.
So there's been no correspondence with the city and my staff. We didn't know that that new ordinance was on there until we had the issue on 10/3. When we got that ordinance, is when I called Alan to make an appointment. There's been no correspondence of my staff over this at all, after your directions for us to collaborate. There's been no connections at all. Just wanted to be on the record.
Thank you. I don't know if you want me to respond to that, but I mean, again, like Mr. Bucci said, I mean, this is implementation of the direction that was previously given by the council. The coordination that needs to happen between the city and the fire district is organizing the collection of the fee and making sure that we're on the same page on how that's calculated. I could go into more details on that. There was one application. how that's calculated. I could go into more details on that. There was one application I'm aware of where the city collected the fee was calculated incorrectly based on misunderstanding of staff. The fire department also collected the fee, which was also calculated incorrectly, which we don't want that to happen. And we need to coordinate on those aspects of the ordinance as directed by the council, and we will do that.
Thank you, City Manager. All right. Moving on to item nine, discussion and consideration of ordinance number two seven five dash 2024, an ordinance adding chapter 13 dash three of the clearly municipal code establishing fire hydrant inspection and testing requirements. Mr. Flora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tried to give a decent background in the staff report on this, but this is a discussion is, the ordinance before you is something that came out of discussions with water committee, Councilmember Sluthen, Councilmember Kramer. You know, I don't know if I need to go into all the background here, but you know, we know wildfire is an issue and just, you know, the city's responsibility in trying to protect the community. We've had a lot of conflicting and incomplete information on fire flow data from fire hydrants in the city, from the three water companies. There is a decent amount of data that was provided as part of LAFCO's municipal service review process a few years ago. But that data is incomplete and somewhat dated. So the recommendation here is if, for us, in order to ensure that, you know, as decision makers with land use authority and a focus on protecting the community, that we have accurate information for ensuring public safety and be able to plan future development. There's not a lot of examples of this type of ordinance with a city. We talked about this before because most cities have utilities under their umbrella. It's not a requirement to do something like that. And there's, there's a few standards. The most common really is NFPA, National Fire Protection Association develops a number of standards for various issues, including flood testing and, and in addition, marking hydrants and inspections and so forth. So our recommendation really is just to use that existing standard, which is why they recognize. And this ordinance then would require the water districts to both inspect, maintain, and flow test those hydrants to make sure that, one, we, we know what works. We know what flow we're getting from those. It's easier for everyone, including the fire district, to understand, you know, what's available from those hydrants. And then it also gives us enough information to be able to help the water districts plan for expansion and improvement. We know that, you know, the tests aren't going to come back and every hydrant in the city is going to be fire flows. And, and, you know, probably few cities that is the case, but we need to be able to improve the situation that we're in right now. And up to this point, we, we haven't been able to get enough information to really even focus in on those decisions. So, you know, I can go into the details if you want. I mean, the, the high level, basically, we're recommending that inspection and maintenance of hydrants happen every year. That can be done by the water certified water operators. And there's kind of a list of what the expectation is, a report developed on that. And then actual flow testing, according to the standard, is really done every five years. Now, the California Code of Regulations, for example, requires mutual water companies all ready to do that every year and record those results. But this would be every five years based on the standard, although it does require that this test be initiated within the, the next six months. So before July 1st, it's a little bit longer than that now at this point, but by the time the ordinance would go into effect, so that we sort of have that baseline. And then after that, they would complete every, every five years. So I don't know if you have any specific questions. I would say that I did have a phone conversation with Sean Twill today, who is General Manager of Golden State Water Company. He wanted to make sure to share with us and let us know that through CPC regulations, they do have some standards through, I think, the American Water Works Association that they do have to follow and report on. He did express he is, does understand why the city is putting a focus on this. They certainly want to comply with that. And he's going to share the standards and the reports that they already produced and to provide to the Public Utilities Commission with us. And, you know, I shared with him, obviously, the intent that we've discussed up to this point is certainly not that this would be some type of punitive approach on the water companies, but we really have to have this information for future planning and protection of our city. So.
Great. Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Sluthen?
If Golden State, is Golden State going to share the actual flow information at this point?
That's what I'm understanding. He said he would send me the reports and the standards that they currently follow.
If I may, I mean, I'm kind of an instigator on this issue. I've been trying to get some actual data, and it's been pretty well impossible. All water districts, Highlands and cannot do it. I've provided the information that I have. I don't know what the accuracy of it is, the date or anything to it. But I've been told that these things are not accurate. So I'm asking, can you please give us then accurate information? As if Highlands is required to do those things on a yearly basis, please provide us that. I mean, it's important for the safety of this city. I mean, the fire department needs to know if they go on a system and tie the connect to a fire hydrant, if there's water in there or not. I mean, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do this testing or have the water companies do this testing if they're already required for you.
Councilmember Prudential?
Yeah, I, in addition to what Councilmember Sluthen said, I found the same things. And trying to figure out what the standard would be to go to, I also added up, I called some, actually some relatives at Burnet Fire Service in Sacramento Valley, asked that question, what are the standards for testing? And immediately, he sent me two ninety-one of the National Fire Protection Association standards. And he said, that's, that's what we follow. So that, when you came up with it independently, that was, I thought that was, that was good. And I think that's really the most comprehensive source that we could use, and they're, they're accepted nationwide. So it's, to me, it was a no brainer to go with that. And like Councilmember Sluthen said, we've been frustrated in trying to get, to get good information. I was at a quarter board meeting a month or two ago, and they talked about testing 150 hydrants, wasn't it? We read that too. And they finally quit because they didn't make sense. That's not very helpful. No, it's needed.
All right. Any other comments from, questions from council? All right. I'll open up the public comment. Anyone here in the chamber have a comment to make? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
So before we get to that, if I can just speak on this for two seconds before Madam Clerk identifies, there was a written comment received, as she just previously referenced, to items nine and 10. The request in the, just from my perspective, the request to read, have the city clerk read a three-page legal objection that was received at five o'clock tonight is, is, is not appropriate under the city's rules. And this has nothing to do with trying to prohibit anybody from knowing what it says. The council's already been provided it. It'll be provided to the public if it, if it is not already. But our, our specific meeting procedures do not allow audible public comments via Zoom. And it would be inappropriate to, you know, to bypass that rule by simply asking the city clerk to be the audible public comment. Moreover, the comments were received at, at five o'clock, and the deadline is four o'clock. So I, my perspective is that it's not appropriate to have the city clerk read a three-page legal objection. My office has, has received it. We will review it. There's nothing in there that, that indicates to me for, for the council's edification that they do not have the authority to move forward with the first read and introduction tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bucci. So based on that, Madam Clerk, any additional comments on
There is an additional comment on Zoom. This again is from Megan Estep on behalf of Highlands Water. She states, please advise that Highlands Water strongly opposes both item nine and 10 on this evening's agenda.
Thank you. All right. I'll bring it back to council.
Excuse me. I approve, and we first reading of ordinance number two seventy-five dash 2024, an ordinance adding chapter 13 dash three in the clearly municipal code establishing fire hydrants inspection and testing requirements.
All right, second. I have a motion from Councilmember Sluthen, a second from Councilmember Kramer. Please
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item 10, consideration of ordinance number two seven seven dash two zero two four, an ordinance of the city clearly amending chapter eight, section eight point five to add subsection eight point five dash seven to establish standards for relocation of underground utilities in public driveway. Mr. Flora?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. So this item is, you know, also related to sort of the separate utilities that we have here, which include three water districts, sewer district, and then we're also, you know, say PG&E, AT&T. Now, we have franchise agreements with utilities like PG&E and AT&T that outline how work in the right way happens. We also have, which is in the same section of municipal code, encouragement permit requirements. So whether you're doing a driveway that connects to a city street or doing some major utility project, there's the requirements for applying for encouragement permit that's reviewed and approved by the city. So this isn't really in, in that part of it. But, you know, with, we don't have franchise agreements with all the utilities. We do with Golden State, we do with AT&T and whatnot. The other two water companies and Lake County Special Districts, we do not have any similar agreement. So, you know, as we do with more and more road projects, as has been desired by the council and the community, we've had a significant increase in conflicts in doing those road projects with the utilities that exist in the streets. We found frequently that many of these utilities, you know, were done to a standard that is no longer appropriate, often shallow. There's various types of materials that were used. There was not good mapping. And so, you know, we, we don't know what the conflicts are. When we do a road project, you know, there's a lot of work, design work that goes into analysis, poaching of the situation. But, you know, it's also not the city's 100% responsibility to go locate everyone else's utilities. So what you see here is an attempt to try to provide some structure to those projects moving forward. And I think, maybe unless you have specific questions, I'll just leave it with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Flora. Any questions from the council?
No.
Seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. Anyone here in the chamber? Madam Clerk, any additional comments on Zoom?
There are no additional comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And we will note that prior comment did encompass from Megan both of these agenda items. Now we're going back to council.
I want to move to first reading of ordinance number two seventy-seven dash 2024, an ordinance amending section eight point dash five of the municipal code relating to requirements for utility construction and maintenance in the public driveway, standard for relocation and underground utilities, of underground utilities.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sluthen, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Moving on to item 11, discussion and consideration of adoption of tribal consultation guidelines. Mr. Flora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So this is also an item that has come forward to council a number of times. So we started on this project a little over two years ago in trying to address some of the project-related issues that we've had with some tribal consultation. And, you know, there's, there's kind of a movement, a number of cities are starting to adopt. I mean, there's all, there's requirements of state law, which is, you know, something for us to rely on. But we thought it may be helpful for, you know, both city staff and tribal staff and representatives to just provide some more clarity to that process, what the city expects as lead agency and how, how things are going to work. So what you see here is really one part of it. And this is the part that the council needs to adopt. But there's a number of other attachments to this, which actually have the, you know, if it's AB 52 under C quote, the, the law and other guidelines that have been established related to that, or if it's SBA 18 for, for that process, we have a handbook essentially for each one of those groups, staff and flow charts that follow everything through. So there's a number. So Lisa Westwood, you recall, is a consultant we hired to do this. She's been diligent, patient, working through this. We've done a number of iterations over the years. She did consultation. You know, we, we did a request with, as required by law, with the Native American Heritage Commission to any potential tribes that have, have influence in this area. Notices were sent out to all of them. It actually describes the, a little bit about that process in, in the guidelines. But we got responses from Middletown, Eland, Coy, and, and then also a couple of other tribes who, who had initial consultation and then agreed to sort of defer future consultation to the three other tribes, which have a closer structural connection. So one was the Pemetal Upper Lake and Yotchita Nation. But they, we did have an initial consultation with it. So anyway, we could go through this. I mean, we've done a number of iterations. What you have for tonight is really kind of came back to the basics of what is required by state law, trying to further clarify that in our process.
Excellent. Thank you.
Maybe it would be good for everybody to know what Lisa's qualifications are for that, because she's basically the one that put this all together, correct?
She is. I'm not really prepared to give a very good CV on her, but she is without doubt the undisputed expert in this area. I would say probably internationally. She's the president of registered professional archaeologist association, which is sort of the, it's not really credentialing, but it's the professional association for archaeologists across the world. And she has a very, her depth of knowledge is pretty enormous, and she has a pretty unique way of really being able to navigate some sticky differences of opinions between tribes and lead agencies. So she's really the premium and expert, certainly in California, for this type of policy.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. Anyone here in the chamber? I'd like to make. Anyone here in the chamber like to make a comment? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Primmer.
Just appreciate staff's work on this. I know it was a big lift, and I commend you for who you hired to do the work for us and also that it's good to be another, just another item where we're leading the way for other cities to follow suit and have the work and interact with our tribes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt volume one, Navy Sovereign Nation Consultation Guidelines to present.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Firdal. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. All right, item twelve, consideration of amendment to employment services agreement with Timothy Hobbs as police chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. So Chief Hobbs' contract, which is now almost completed, his second year, initially specifically did not qualify Chief Hobbs for longevity incentive, which is allowed before in the management benefit plan where other department heads and upper management have the ability to receive an additional incentive based on the number of years they've been with the city. So what I'm recommending here is the council approved this amendment just striking that section of the contract, which would allow Chief Hobbs to begin receiving.
All right, any questions from council?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I think Chief Hobbs has shined as police chief, and I really appreciate his work. Thank you.
All right, I'll open up the public comment. Anyone here in the chamber who'd like to make a comment, please come forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll bring back Councilmember Primmer.
Just like to, again, thank Chief Hobbs and the efforts put forth so we could be one of the leaders of season, Ken. It wasn't that long ago that that wasn't the case. We had a revolving door, people leaving, training was in issue, and that's definitely turned a hundred and eighty degrees. And I appreciate you and former Chief White's leadership in making that happen.
Councilmember Primmer.
I would agree with everything that Councilmember Firdal said, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to employment contract with Chief Hobbs and authorize the city manager this way.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Excellent. All right, moving on to item thirteen, consideration of updates to fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five salary schedule. Mr. Flora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So as you know, each year, the city council adopts the updated salary schedule for all city employees. This also happened in July, asking for a couple of updates to that salary schedule at this time. One is related to administrative services director, which would bring the salary for that position in line with public works director and finance director. I think as the, that position has grown with additional responsibilities, it's appropriate to be at a similar range. And then assistant city manager is something I wanted to recruit for immediately, but it hasn't been updated for a number of years, and we're recommending that that be kind of in line with some progression that we would expect in the salary schedule for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, any comments here in the chamber? Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll bring you back to council. Councilmember Primmer.
Again, just that's something that need to be updated, especially for recruiting purposes. It's important to be updated in the market in order to entice and get good quality candidates. So kudos to staff again for that. Thank you.
I remain, do we, are you looking for a motion or are you just wondering?
I need a motion to adopt the updated salary schedule.
I knew that we had the twenty-four, twenty-five salary schedule as per ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sutin, a second from Councilmember Primmer. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, city manager report.
This is one of my least favorite meetings when I have to do all the talking, but this will be my last, hopefully, so just a few updates. I mentioned earlier, next Monday and Tuesday, our new sound system and microphones will be installed. So we're really looking forward to having no issues moving forward with that. Wanted to mention that the local hazard mitigation plan work is ongoing. This is one that for, I think, the first time, at least the first time in recent memory, the two cities are doing this with the county, which is, it should be done, and that's great. Director Leva is kind of leading efforts from the city perspective and the city can, Chief Hobbs of the Police Department participate as well. There was a public meeting here a few weeks back, and unfortunately, it's, you know, pretty much staff there was weird and all that, but, you know, it is important to be able to identify potential hazards, and then, once that plan is in place, it does allow us to apply for various mitigation funding from FEMA. I've been asked to participate. CalCities has created a fire insurance working group. So we have a first Zoom meeting on that coming up, so we'll be reporting back to the council on what happens from that. We haven't had a lot of issues with the scaly amount of rainfall over the last few days. We think the biggest section of problems has been on the tree streets project on Walnut Street. So we were able to get most of the FDR treatment done on the side streets, but because of proximity to water utilities, we really weren't able to do the FDR on Walnut. So we've had to kind of amend the project scope. So essentially, the other side streets now have the base treatment in, which is basically concrete. So there is water standing on them because the pavement isn't there. So there's, the water is equal to the pavement that will be there at some point, and then it'll start draining. But Walnut, we've tried to prepare for it, add additional grating and stuff, but it's a bit of a mess and very frustrating, I'm sure, for the folks who are trying to traverse that. So we're trying to do what we can to get that project completed so we don't have these issues anymore, but there's been a number of frustrating delays. So a couple of, last two things, a couple of grants that we recently applied for. Local partnership grant, Director Leva and her team put together this week requesting one point seven million. It's a fifty percent match for the project, hopefully to complete next year. So the LPP program is the program that municipalities who have self-help tax measures are eligible for because of measure B, this is a special pot of money that we're eligible for. That, for example, in this case, the other two agencies, the county and Lakeport in our area, can't get, like, the city, there's a number of, but anyways, it's a fifty percent match. So we're looking at doing a rehab project on Fortieth and Boils next year with that funding. So fingers crossed we'll be able to get that. And then just, well, actually, it'll be going in tomorrow, the grant application's complete. But there's a grant through FEMA that we think is a good fit for the recreation center and sports complex. You know, we have funding to do, we think most, if not all, the sports field, but no funding in this time for the sports complex. So we will be applying for seventeen point nine million for that project. So keep your fingers crossed. It's like a resiliency program.
Thank you. Councilmember Kramer.
Yes, I kind of hit the trifecta of meeting. It was like I had, first one was ABC, LTAD, and transit authority. Meeting, I think, one thing of consequence to our city is that there were a couple of routes that had been dropped for a specific time period, I think, between four thirty and five or somewhere in that range, but there were routes that were not being used. And OTAD is struggling. They're, they're, they're not making money. So we have to do something to cut expenses and see if we can recruit. That was the most, probably the most significant thing there. And then there were our A meeting that I actually attended by Zoom. Nothing of real consequence on that. And last, I had a board meeting of clerk that served on, and just a recap of the projects that they have going on. They have, we got something like three and a half million dollars we have to get spent by March of a grant that was in the third year of the grant. A big part of that's going to be concentrated out here on, between Woodland College, our city and school, and then the right-of-ways within the city on the east side of Highway fifty-three. Any place I'm missing on that?
Well, I think that's kind of the initial phase. I mean, there's a larger plan to do, you know, kind of everything east of that, the city boundary.
Oh, that's going to be, going to be huge for that side of the city, wasn't it? Mr. Spady?
Councilmember Sutin. I attended the local meeting yesterday, and we're working through the process of the MSR of all the fire districts within the county. I learned some things, and I'm really concerned about how the ISO ratings are being established, particularly here, because I don't have any reference of other ISO reports, which, you know, there are certain parts that have been rated on water supply, maintenance, and flow. Again, this is another issue why we have, we just adopted the ordinance on there's item number nine. The, you know, also since we have artists, fairly disadvantaged community, that some monies could be available, that's, I mean, now collected by the county, but they're only being used for, by the Sheriff's Department. It could be used for some of the fire departments too. So that's a continuation. The next meeting will be in January, we'll be here. We'll continue on reviewing the aspects of the MSR, and then probably in March, the finalized. That's a good question.
Sure. So who, who controls the money and all of this?
I can, I can, it's not seventy-two million. Is it probably seventy-two? I don't remember the year that it was passed. A lot of communities, there's sort of a disagreement about whether it's, you know, it was, it was labeled public safety sales tax, whether that means law enforcement or also fire. Initially, fire departments throughout the state were part of the promotion of passing the sales tax, and it wasn't pulling well, and they pulled the fire districts out of it and law enforcement only. So anyway, it's a, it's a portion of sales tax that the state collects and then gives back to the counties based on the formula, and it's within the purview of the Board of Supervisors on what, I mean, it has to be within the bounds of the public safety intent. I think it funds both the sheriff's office and the district attorney's office to some extent. When I was in Mendocino County, the board then made a decision to share some of that with the fire district. So it is an option, but probably won't be real easy.
Easy.
You know, because, you know, they're going to be taking money from the sheriff and district attorney, so they'll be a bite there.
Curious where that actually is. Nobody speaks to know how much there is in that budget, or anything?
I, I was actually looking it up while I was watching the meeting, and then I got distracted, but I can find it. It's in the county budget. I just didn't vote.
Have we got it out? It's in the budget?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I would, I shouldn't guess, but yeah, it's several million for sure.
Councilmember Primmer.
I can't believe that I'm the one to get your board on this, since there are several there. But I'd like to thank you again, the city, for supporting and being a sponsor for the Hope Center recognition and fundraiser. I think that's such a valuable part of our community, helping people to find housing, low-barrier entry points for homeless, medical and addiction issues, both the same, actually. And that project was something I was proud to be a part of, even though I didn't get to vote on the half a million that was voted on there because I was working at the time for Adventist Health that was a co-sponsor and now runs it independently. That five hundred thousand through CBG grant funding was used wisely. And I want to thank the city of Clearly for doing that. It's changed lives. It was wonderful to see the number of people that have graduated from Hope Center and are now in stable housing, including one individual who was actually able to purchase a home. So again, kudos to the city. It's easy to point fingers and find things that are wrong. That's the easy part, finding solutions and helping people change their lives is what's most important. So congratulations all of you.
I second that. I mean, I always deal with that a lot. Kudos to you too, because you worked on that physically, with Adventist Health for a long time, getting that opened up. Thank you for helping.
And just, just a caveat on that, Councilmember Sutin, also helping the homeless is, of course, Restoration House, which is in Lower Lake, and then with the help of Councilmember Kramer and everybody, again, on this board and the Redbud Healthcare District, we do have the availability of worldwide charities. And I hope that they, in talking with Pastor Smith from Adventist Health, hopefully they'll be able to help rehouse people and get furnishings and things that they need for their households as we rebuild from the Boils farm. So again, it's good work at a community level.
If you ever have a chance to go to Hope Center, ask for the tree with the keys. It's, it's really cool.
The graduation ceremony for the keys is something that's very special to each member, and it's prominently in the conference room. Yep, so it's a big deal.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Overton.
Yes, I agree with Hope Center. It was funny, I was kind of going through my emails, and I found stuff where I worked on Hope Rising back in the days, you know, that's, was, everybody was working on homeless. And it was like, one day we went to like ten meetings, and I was like, oh my God, can we come up with one thing? And, and that's kind of how the talk with Hope Rising started, was just like come up with one idea. Everybody's working on the same thing, and so Hope Rising was kind of out of all those groups and became kind of one that I thank goodness for, because going to all the meetings and talking about the same thing kind of deteriorated. So yes, Hope Rising is a wonderful thing. I'm really proud that they have helped a lot of people, some of them that I actually have sent over there. So they've, they've done a great job. That was a really good event, and I'm glad that we sponsored that and did a good job there when you were working there, helping get that done. You know, I'm proud of you. So, so I just have, I went to the clean water board, but we found out that our little test stuff that we were using to see if it would capture our, you know, or see what was in our water is, did not work well, unfortunately. So we're going to have to figure out something else to do on that. So I guess this will be the last time I report on that. So I'll miss that, you know, been on that stuff for twenty years, so, I mean, I'll miss. But it's, it was a trial and error, and the biggest, had to figure out, and it didn't work like we wanted it to. So, so the charcoal didn't quite fit. So, so I'll have to say, later on, it's a different way to find out, you know, what the flows, the stuff that's flowing into our lake, what we're capturing. We're trying to figure out the capture of all of the coming flows and stuff that come in. And so hopefully they'll continue on figuring out what we can do there. That was actually the only meeting that I went to, because I've been working on trying to get the senior center, you know, up and ready, so for the holidays. I do want to thank today, we were lucky enough to receive a couple of donations for Golden State Water Company. Thank you very much. So Stella, I mean, Currie had designated some money to us, so I appreciate that. She does that every year for us to, to be able to put on, you know, a good Thanksgiving dinner, and, and we also keep some of that money back for Christmas. This year, we're not going to do Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving Day, but everybody is welcome to come on Wednesdays for lunch. And then we will save some of that money for Christmas Day. We will be doing a Christmas dinner there, if it's okay with our city manager. I do it on Christmas Day, because I like, because really nobody does it on Christmas Day, so we're continuing to do that. So I really appreciate what Golden State does for us. They, you know, do it every year. It's the Babel Project, and they do a wonderful job making sure they donate to all kinds of organizations, making sure turkeys and that to churches and stuff like that. They give to the community, you know, this. So I just want to give them a really high praise on, you know, what they do for our community. So, all right, and I think that's all we get. Great.
Good do-over, Councilmember Primmer.
Not really. I wanted to send kind of a PSA. Chief, do you know if nine one one services have been restored? I got the notice that they were down, but I hadn't seen that it had been restored.
For the sheriff's office, I don't know. They had rerouted everything to Mendocino County.
Okay.
Great.
Just for Clark Vision Army.
I thought that was just the sheriff's, right?
Wonderful. I've opened a report. Everyone have a great Thanksgiving coming up. We have a lot of wonderful events coming up the first two weeks of December here in Clear Lake and Lower Lake, so keep your eyes on the calendar.
We also are putting, the Rotary has probably taken over my warm for the winter program that I've done over the last twenty-some years. So we are collecting coats, and so we have at Ollia's down here that you can drop coat, anything warm, no summer clothes though, but blankets, hats, gloves, and warm clothing, socks, shoot, are always wonderful. And then we're also collecting at the senior center, so please feel free to bring, we just, they don't have to be new, but clean. You know, and we collect from hip and sauna, so everybody needs help, and so this is just the time of year where it's kind of giving back to the community. So we hope that everybody participates and bring us a jacket, bring us a sweater, bring us whatever you got, gloves, whatever, so.
You might go on to say when the breakfast is.
Yes, that's on December of, what?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, December fourteenth, and it's over here at Burnsville Way School, and all our community, it's just a big community luncheon that the Rotarians put on. I think we all are now. So, you know, so we'll be down there giving out nice dinners and, and clothing for everybody, so.
And Christmas with Santa.
And Santa.
Pictures with Santa and maybe some gifts for Santa, or for Santa.
And it's just a fun, it's just a fun, fun day. It's just a fun day where everybody comes down and enjoys. I just love that it's such a community thing, so. And there's just tons of people that are going to do it. Our mayor was down there speaking for Flor, so last night, what was it, last night? Speaking of those floors, so we will, we will do anything that Burn community needs, it's an honor.
All right, well, thank you all. Any future agenda items? Here you go. We're going to move to closed section. Thank you all for joining us.
Happy New Year, happy Thanksgiving.